We all have enough infrastructure for sewer, for water, and they had to say, okay, we gotta, we gotta do something better here. They discovered that, these annals, which is basically...
You know, I had this discussion with the mayor, and he was kind of at different thoughts. And corporate infrastructure is like most cities, the South Bay, they've not, they've not escrowed the money. So, and he's like, we gotta stop running. And I said, well, Mayor, thank you back this way. The infrastructure's gonna have boom upgrade. If you don't, the state's gonna make it great. So if there's no growth, the existing rate payers is gonna have, you can just raise their rates to pay for it.
You don't think anybody's gonna get hurt, just like the law, everything to...
No, 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 I'm just saying...
As low as possible rates so that we can catch up with the rent and the rent house.
I know, it's a little bit of both, though. People get ousted. Schools is a good example. Schools, you need to take your debt, push it out over period of time to let people that are adding, that are coming in and growing, to contribute to it. Because if you do get over period of time, you capture the, the growth cost. People that move here, the additional property taxes. That is how you future-proof that infrastructure. Now, your existing infrastructure, I agree with you, we need to have some, some funding that will be able to, to help with the widening and growing and intersection signals, stuff like that. But your infrastructure, three years, there's a lot of simple engineering organizations that have documented it. Water, sewer, roadways have been neglected. And if you're paying down the road, they have not been made that right. And because of that, they haven't been maintained properly, they've been money-sold to them continuously over the years and years and years, they've fallen so fast.
Yeah, you know, uh, this is, you know, the, an economy, like somewhere down there, it's, it's a very precarious balance, uh, commercial, industrial, residential. And what you want to do is you wanna have as many people who live in town, who work in town, that's least where there are the burrows, jobs, least wasted time by people is that they ask used. And what happens is you grow too fast and you don't properly plan, you totally lose control.
Well, that's why you have to be broke on it. So you can have those industry sectors, you can have those areas, martial work jobs, and we're probably...
But it's not allocated down.
Because we're following the same scenario as, like, we have some kids.
Yep.
You know, that's where people wanna live, because it's nice. It has nice places to shop, nice places to live, but the jobs won't necessarily, uh, support everybody that lives there, just so people have to go, like, international or commute. And I don't know that we can ever get enough jobs.
Oh, we could, we could, if, you know, when, when my company moved to here, bought a place on the day of nineteen ninety-four, we did it because the state of Tennessee had a very aggressive bringing the industry. And, you know...
But that's where you have to take care of, is sometimes you have to broker deals.
Right.
A lot of people don't understand, you're given the tax break, you know, here, and that's sort of pretty fine, pretty common, that's over.
And we didn't even need the tax break, just not having to pay California income.
And so we're competitive market today.
But, but we still have the advantage of Tennessee, where we don't have to bend over backwards to bring people here, because we're one of three of ten states that has no state income.
So we have to compete against a lot of...
We don't really figure out laws, we're gonna talk about...
We're gonna sort of back to what y'all are talking about now.
Okay.
And, and, and talk about some more.
Because years ago, the state required you to, it was a mandate, you had to escrow, it was a monodot, your solos loans would be there.
Yeah, well, you have to make your depreciation and all that stuff, and then you tell...
Utility is hard, anybody that's following the comptroller's office, and if you're not properly funding your utility based off of your rates, for two years, if you go to medics for two years on the utility, they'll come in and set your rates for you.
Yeah, definitely.
If you buck your...
Much they will.
Or if you have something bad enough, like in Jackson, Mississippi, they'll come in and take over.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, we were on the city of...
Did you say, did that happen this spring, or like, that was a year ago?
I mean, actually, you can see all, you're not sure, it's one of our...
He just talked about...
Because we negotiate great deals for gas and...
Thank you, we work this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for everybody else. This is the first thing we wanna talk about is bylaws, and it's a very high topic, of course, but there's a couple reasons I wanna talk about bylaws. One of them is that the bylaws that we have on the books, now, this is what I was able to find in the box. And so, it was, it was last approved in July of nineteen ninety-nine, was the last time that our bylaws were put up. And a few years ago, I kinda made a little run, and maybe updated these, and I didn't, I wasn't able to, to get that through the legal department at the time, for whatever reason, we didn't wanna get into that at the time, I'm not sure what that was, but I feel like now is the time to take a look at these bylaws. And one of the main reasons is that they're out of compliance with state law. And so, I'm no lawyer, I don't technically be a lawyer, but if your bylaws dictate everything that you have to do, don't comply with statutory provisions, then you can put yourself at risk, some enterprise lawyer would come in and challenge someone, kinda go back to the foundations of how you act, and the things that you do, then that could, that could rip decisions in general, and that kind of thing. So, there's, it's that Tennessee Code of Annihilation thirteen three one oh three, here's this, this sheet going, see this here, that I have some guys, and there's a highlighted text, what they did was in two thousand and ten, they updated that section of state law to add that wording that I've got there, and they tweaked some other things. One of the things that they said is that your bylaws, basically, what this section says, is that the planning commission is in charge of setting its own rules, to extend it, county commission construction, the number of members, and then what that is, and stuff like that. But as far as how the, the planning commission operates here day to day, you know, when we have a meeting, how you do motions, and order business, and all that, that, the statute says that's up to the planning commission to decide. And so what it says is, the planning commission shall elect a chair from its members, one year of full reelection, each plan, each regional planning commission shall adopt rules for the transaction of business, such as bylaws, which shall include and not be limited to selection of additional officers, select vice chairman, secretary, for whatever things appropriate to fulfill the means. And then the highlighted text, the requirements of each regional planning commission shall make findings of fact, statements of material evidence, and reasons for its actions. And so what the, what the legislature did there, and I'm sure this was some kind of home code or legislation, what they, they require planning commissions to have something in the bylaws, to kinda, to, to require findings of fact, basically saying that we, we find that this is in compliance, and this doesn't, you know, contravening the purposes of zoning and then to that. And so, that, that's to kinda head off arbitrary, egregious actions, where you're just making decisions and denying things without any reason, or approving them, whether they comply with the rules or not. It's sound policy regardless of where it came from. And so, but what they said here is, of course, as we probably talked about, I think, I think it was Tranel Bill, the rules, the state legislature said what you have to do, and we have to do, so, so what they're saying is that every regional planning commission has to have this in the bylaws, just a...
I'm curious, uh, these, the authority that took the bylaws, are y'all working off a resolution that gave y'all authority to do that, and so do you happen to know what it is?
Well, the, the authorities are in the statute.
I understand it's in the statute, but did they ever give permission, because a lot of times I've seen that's what they're wanting to do, or...
Uh, I don't, I don't think it, just to be honest, I don't know that it has to, I'm no lawyer.
I don't, I don't necessarily think it has to, but if it does, then y'all clean up the way it is, because here's the reason I ask is, before we put these in the play, I need to identify what might be out there so we can kill it, so that this stands alone by itself.
That's right.
So...
I don't know that there's any, so you're saying if we adopt something, we don't wanna have some other thing that's...
Yes, if you have to have it merged, or...
To my knowledge, there's not another thing that's been adopted. I think that you come on board when, when they did it, about six months ago, I guess, that they, they, they restructured the planning commission from nine-member boards to seven-member boards, and got rid of the districts, we used to have districts where everybody used to have to be from, and all that stuff, and did a little of that. That, that is the only policy that the county commission has acted this time, I'm sending the copy of that. And, and so, what it did was it superseded all the previous versions, because that's been done multiple times throughout the years. But no, there's nothing as far as bylaws or anything like that that has ever gotten into...
You don't know who L E S is?
That was Lisa, I forget her last name, she, that was the employee in that.
Oh, so, so did you, and that, I'm just looking at it a little quick, did you ever kill any pre-existing ones as part of this new one?
No, no, what we have, what we have for the move, as far as I know, is this that was adopted in nineteen ninety-nine.
But are we gonna kill that one?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And so, I think, in, in this resolution right here, what it says is that this shall supersede any other bylaw that may be in effect.
Then that is promised.
Yes, sir, I think it's toward the end.
And then you can wait and prove, uh...
There it is, it's actually on the front page. Now therefore be resolved, so I've got this scripture, it's like a resolution of the planning commission, that the bylaws procedure, the planning commission set forth below, or hereby adopted.
Oh, okay.
Any previous resolution or other action is in conflict and repeatable. So it just, it just undo it, so it doesn't...
All right.
So, right in place of state law, another issue that's come up is, is just the frequency of meetings and scheduling and that kind of thing. I've talked with the county commission recently about the way we're looking to maybe restructure my department to some extent, as far as, you know, I, this is where I like to tell my wife, of course, having a baby, and I had somebody call me to sign a plan, you know, those kinds of things. And so, the, the county commission is, is gonna assist us with that, and I'll just get somebody on board that can handle that kind of stuff. But one of the things, we, we have a, the county commission and the staff, everybody has a very regular, rigorous meeting schedule, and it makes it so that not, you know, people can't really give away for any, any time of the session. And so, I think it, it is the planning commission will be okay with it, combined with looking at the, the planning commission meeting date of the week. And so, one of the things that the bylaws called for, and it's one of the things we're also in conflict with, the bylaws actually call for the, the meeting date to be a different day than when we do have one.
That's with the...
So it's already, where I, where I can watch with that, these bylaws anyway.
Again, I know we're in a passive conversation, but as long as it's a publicly scheduled, or, for example, I can plan around it, I, I think you can have it whenever you want it.
Right, and so, so what, what we, if the planning commission wanted to do, since we're gonna adopt these bylaws, we need to get a new set implemented, essentially. If everybody's okay with it, we could look at changing the meeting day, we could, we can do make the fourth Tuesday of the month, we can move that to the third, I think, the second Tuesday, the second Tuesday of the month, that might kill half the meeting, because we do the horizontal bills that same week. Now, I don't know that we can do two, that's the same week, but if we could move it to the third, that might be...
Well, that'd mess up your time you require for advertising, and before they go to the county commission.
Right, so, so that's where, that's where we would have to make another change. So we have to publish a middle calendar, so if everybody would agree, okay, let's do that, what we would need to do, when we brought the new bylaws to you guys to adopt, let's say we did that next one, we would also bring a revised middle calendar, and we would reset the meeting day. What we probably would wanna do is maybe skip the July meeting, just kinda reset everything, and then everybody, that we don't have a meeting that month, and then we'll come back in August under a new submitted calendar. And we would do like a revised submitted calendar for the remainder of the year, submit it, get it to all the surveyors, everybody that'll be dealing with it, somebody...
I don't know that I can fill a month without a big check.
Okay, Josh.
Yes?
Eric was, was just asking, is maybe his first plan, preliminary plan, second plan, or the final?
No, no, sir, so that's the, so the way it works, and this, we can give y'all a little background, this actually is good training, so for you guys to kinda talk about the way that we do this stuff. So, the stuff that gets to you guys on the agenda, we meet right now on the fourth Tuesday of the month, correct? Well, the, the way we have our submitted calendar structured, is twenty-eight days prior to the meeting day, every, after every surveyor, engineer, anybody that's gonna turn something in to you guys, has gotta make a submitted to us by three blocks, at that. So that's the first submitted, we get it, half the other, one of the other ways on the front desk, we'll stand it received, we, we get five copies along with any other supporting documentation that they have to turn in, with it, with a complete application and all the things, and all that's been turned in, first submitted. Everyone, we'll work with people if they come and write the wrong check for the wrong amount, you know, we try not to be two numbers, but they gotta, they basically gotta have a complete application when they bring it in. And everybody's got much better about that over here, because they used to say, hey, next week, yes, I can't pass next week, we, we, we gotta, you gotta have everything. So, twenty-eight days prior to the meeting, that's the first submitted. So I get that, right now, I'm the one that reviews everything that comes before you guys. And so, so I will review that, if there's engineering components, which there usually are, Mayor, subdivision marshal, boy, we're not an engineer, we'll also do a, a review of it at the same time. Within about a week of that first submitted, within seven days, what I try to do is to get them staff comments. So I emailed them staff comments, and copied what they turned in, and said, hey, I say, here's, here's your, here's your staff comments, and I lay out the timeline, you need to have it back to us by this date, at this time, for second submitted, correct? So, when you get days prior to the meeting, and they turn it in the first time, I give the comments within seven days, they address all the staff comments. And then the second submitted is when they have to bring in all that revised, with everything that we told them that needs to change. And so they get that to us, the second submitted deadline is, I think it's fourteen days prior to, yeah, uh, thirteen days prior, I guess it is, to the, to the, to the actual meeting. So they, they get it back to us fully revised, all staff comments have to be addressed, they need to get us a, a, a response in the comments, as we require, and if you look through your back, you'll see where it's like, I'll say, please correct zoning, it, it, to P U N E, and I'll say, addressed, or whatever. And so...
I want to complain about that, though.
Sir?
We just see the answers, we never see the question.
Yes, you do, it's in there.
But what I've seen in staff comments, yeah, what I've seen, the engineers submit a letter, they'll just pull this one through again, you go, address, or change this, change that, we don't know what the question is.
So sometimes, you may be right, some marshals sometimes will send up separate comments, is what I guess, there might be a secondary comments review.
I'm not gonna pick more work for you, I'm just letting you know that...
Yes, sir.
We're getting the comments, I mean, we're getting the answers, we're just not getting what precipitated the comments.
I think you're, you're right, now, the fighting comments, you, you always get that, you should, unless I was actually...
Right, so, that, that being mine, is that, from my perspective, when I need something like that, I'll restate the question, my letter returning to you, so that if there's any question, the five years you now comes out of the file, you'll be able to read it, number one, well, this was the question, this is what I did with it.
And that's, that's the best way to do it. Some, most do it that way, but some just send you back responses without comments, so that's more, okay, well, I'll let know next time that we've received a comment for a merger with the planning commission, and this isn't a... But so, so, go back through, so, we get that second submitted, that's what you guys will see most of the time, unless we happen to look at it, because it's thirteen days prior to the meeting, so I get that second submitted, and that's when I start working on everything that you see here, so the meeting presentation, packet, putting all that stuff together, we start working on getting all of that stuff together. Now, when I'm looking through it, if something else comes to me, you know, I mean, it's a little unfair, because I already had one crack at it, but if I see something that's very significant, that I missed, or that they didn't do, or, or they ignored, or whatever, then, then I'll give them an opportunity to make a third submitted, because thirteen days, there's plenty of time. And so, we, we, we get that, that second submitted, I get the packet together, and I try to get that to you guys a minimum of five, seven days prior to the meeting, so everybody has time to get it. We get you a hard copy and an electronic copy. So that's our submitted process. In the details, you know, there's a three o'clock D M. is the cutoff, and we'll take it after that, come on the submitted days, they have to give the responses to comments, they used to give this responses to comments, that's something that I instituted when I started here, because it, again, it, it's hard to create a track of trail, and, and we, we don't, we don't make any sense. And so that was, that was another thing when I started, that there were a lot of exceptions being made, and people would have emergency, that they needed to get a flat on the agenda the day of the meeting, and so when I started, everybody tried to push that, and so I did kinda push back on, we're not gonna do that, that's not fair to anybody, it's not fair to the staff, it's not fair to the county commission, and so... So that's our, that's our submitted calendar, and that's, that's, that's outlined in here in, in, in these documents. What we would need to do, as I said, is to, to just, if we're gonna change the meeting date next month, if you guys, once legal has had a chance to take a crack at this, and and make any revisions that they wanna see me make, we will get it finalized, and we'll have it back next month. There's no like statutory advertising requirements, like, we don't have to put this in the paper, or, you know, notice thirteen days, like we do the submitted regulations, we, we just can amend it by the way we hope, I believe. I think the, the current bylaws may say by U N A M S, but, and so, I think we'll leave it U N A M S, so if everybody's okay with the changes, we, we approve it.
And so, Josh, that's both the resolution and bylaws, we need to go through that?
The, the draft bylaws, I mean, I would say, look through these old ones, too, because there's, there's probably some good stuff in there, but I try to, maybe just pull the good stuff from the old, from the old bylaws, and, and to match up, but I try to do pretty much the same thing, is to match our bylaws the way we actually do things, and, and the way that we should do things, and, and to kinda line those up. So I would just, I'd say, read, read over everything, y'all have questions, or see anything that you don't like, or have questions, I will read that, and that is left out. And then, I mean, this table, make sure we're not getting anything, particularly...
So, the second Tuesday, just for you to see?
Maybe the third, the third, the other, I guess, or the second, second would be two days before the horizontal bills.
Yeah, 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 that's too much for a... Okay, well, I, I knew the third Tuesday, I like just want some...
I didn't have a question, though.
Yes, what's that?
On here, and, I want to advise chairman, secretary, to follow the same procedure that the chairman, all, what's the office, when it's up to term, and one year, double up for the... So that just means within our term, every year, they...
That's right, and so what we've did, we've done is in January, February, we have, every year, we have the election officers, is what we try to do. One thing that's, that's added in here, and then we'll...
Should we make it all clear, exactly when that is?
Yeah, yeah, I like to say January each year, yeah, where was that at?
In the section two, under elections, under, are the free officers?
Yeah, yep. Yep, well, if you look, it says, I didn't realize I was in there, it says, shall be elected at the January meeting of the planning commission, does that, does that count what you mean?
Okay, it does say that, okay, it's just, it's kind of new to the government, which tells us every, every one year until we all win reelection, but I guess it does kind of say that at the top, I don't know, what do you think, Eric?
Well, one question, do we need clarification, is that a person go over your meeting day from the time page about...
I think, so, on section seven, on the next page, should the office of chairman, vice chairman, or secretary become vacant, the chairman shall elect successors for these positions to serve for the unexpired term.
Yeah, that is fine.
One thing that I didn't wanna mention that's changed a lot since nineteen ninety-nine, I don't remember, this was the, the last recording of the meeting, the, the old bylaws, I think they talk about, audio taken, so we actually have to play it, and so I've got something in there now about digital recordings, digital audio recordings, too many things now, to my office, and video, video recordings, and they shall be uploaded to the internet, and all that stuff, and then it's IP department, it specifies, IP department, or other appropriate staff shall upload the, the video to the, to the internet. The secretary position, as, as it is today, I'm just, that's, that's me, by default, that's the way it is, the current bylaws, and just basically just specifies, I'm acting to upload everything.
Is there part about law rules, like, they, the property matter, like, that's what I feel like these bylaws, the county commission, how are you, do you advise, and should we revise the current edition?
Yeah, yeah. Where was I, is that, is that...
Section eleven, uh, part four.
Newer by is latest edition, is that current, is current?
Yeah.
And then article five, I thought I was speaking today a little bit about this, this is more of a higher area section that I'm looking for, to the law, just to really take a look at, and make sure that we're on the right track there, but that's a finding is a fact that's required by state law. And so what we'll do is, we'll, we'll incorporate something in the staff presentation, like in the motion, to approve this, whatever, flat or site plan, that's how we have it worded now, what we'll say is, to find that all, all finding, all, all the findings are fact, or met, I'll find something that works, you know, and then we'll be able to satisfy that, we're not going through too much verbatim, essentially. So that's that, if anybody has any more questions, or anything, I'll be glad to try to, try to answer them. But, again, I'll, I'll issue for, just to have these on the unit, in the, on the unit in, to change the meeting day, and to, uh, make the submitted calendar...
So, are we...
Is, and that, that's my, that's a great question, is everybody okay with those changes? Does anybody have a problem with that, is, you know, is there any concerns?
Just as a question, you know...
I'm not just dropping this on you right now, so, over the course of the next month, is you gotta read this, if you have questions, if anything doesn't make sense, I wrote these, and I am no lawyer, and I'm not perfect, and so, I probably have made mistakes, and that's all, that's the problem, so, if you see something, then let it out.
See some...
So that's that. Another thing that I wanna talk about with you guys is the zoning map. Talking with the commission, fine, a little bit about this, talking with the commission member about it as well. So, this is our current zoning map, I'll pull it up, it, it may be a little, just a little bit, I think, the one that I've got right here, but it's, it's close. It's a little, it's a big map, there we go. So, if you look up there, at, at the map, you'll see that the overwhelming majority, and I'll, I'll zoom in just a little bit here, see that the overwhelming majority of the county, it's really short, this document, it's really big. There we go. So the overwhelming majority of, of the county is that, that light green color that you see there? And so what that is, is rural residential, these little splotches of, of, what is that? Teal, teal color?
Yes, teal, there.
And then blue, and those are here, this is industrial, they're new people, these down in there, in the across the county, the teal is planning and development, the county commission has written a specific plan for a piece of property, this down here is agricultural reserve, which is a voluntary, is out of district, it's almost like a, like a land trust or something, that a property owner can, can put their property in, to go to a much larger lot size, that's the folks that own the serve, the, all that piece of property down there, that used to be some planning and development, they, I don't know if they're connected, sir. The, this, that doesn't have any color to it, is the city limits, so we don't have any jurisdiction whatsoever within the city limits, as y'all know. But this, this area here is, is a rural residential, so it's most of the county, it's here, this is modeled, the work process, as you guys know, have taken away some privileges, I guess, for property that had public sewer available, their mortgage down to half acre, that's gonna be going away probably next month with the county commission, and they'll be able to, to, to do away with that. So that's gonna make it, it's across most of the county, unless you don't have access to blow the water, you can reduce your lot size down to forty thousand square feet, that's, that's, that's what you're allowed by right, that's something that's been in place for the overwhelming majority of the county, since the adoption zoning in nineteen seventy-three, so in July of nineteen seventy-three, when they implemented zoning, most of it had, had a forty thousand square foot size. And there have been changes over the years, and things have, have come and gone, they've done some little parts of the county that have a little bit bigger lot sizes, or lot sizes, or wherever, but, but in general, that forty thousand square feet have been, have been pretty consistent over the years. And so, we, we've had, I've had some questions from some county commissioners particularly, but, but other folks too, in, in the community, about, you know, is that normal, is that something that you see everywhere? And to an extent, yes, to an extent, though, most other... And to an extent, yes, to an extent, though, most other jurisdictions will have parts of the county, you go to Wilson County, or Willipour County, or particularly, as we're talking about the legislative session, Williamson County. Where they'll have the more rural parts, or less developable parts of the county, or set aside as larger lots, larger lot size, larger rental lot sizes, kind of in some places, and I can return with more information.
Is that based off of geography, maybe?
It is, that's probably the number one determining factor, is these demographic conditions, it's just, it's hard to, they make your lots, when you're on the size now. And so that's, that's one of the factors, availability of services is another one, where you don't have much of a way to talk about water. And so, one of the things that's got a lot of discussion in the last, last year, is the county's comprehensive plan, and something that people think is connected to that, but really isn't, is the urban growth, and the growth of cities, and that kind of thing. So, so this is the document right here that establishes the county's urban growth boundaries. It was approved in two thousand, and it was most recently updated in February of twenty twenty-two, where there were some minor modifications made in a couple of places. And it was approved by the state in February of twenty twenty-two. The economic development office actually has to approve these urban growth boundaries and all this stuff. But within it, there's, there's different categories of land. So, the city limits is the area here, where you can kind of see here, again, county has no jurisdiction over those whatsoever. Outside of those, you have the urban growth boundaries, and that's the areas that the cities can annex to considerably within the next twenty years, that was the intent, when that was set up by the legislature, back in the late nineties. That's the statute, which is the area they expect to grow to within the next twenty years. Outside of that, this area without any color of it, is called land and growth, per the statute, and I'll show you some language from the statute here in just a minute. And then beyond that, is the area, that's called rural reservation. Yep, rural reservation. And so, the counties, all ninety-five of them, except for Memphis, or Chauvin County, and Davis County, because they always get to do their own thing. The other ninety-three counties, when they, in the late nineties, they all had to adopt a comprehensive growth plan, the state required, back then, and made it so that they weren't eligible for grant funding and other things that they didn't want. So everybody did, as far as I know, including the Southern County. When everybody adopted that, what's required by the statute is that your county has to be divided into those areas, so city limits, urban growth boundaries for the, and the growth, planned growth for something developed, and is envisioned. And rural reservation, where due to geographic conditions, and rural, you know, lack of services and that kind of thing, growth is generally not anticipated. Is in the statute, so let me show you where.
Wouldn't it say three and four, or three and one?
I'm sorry?
Three, uh, three was, half urban growth was.
So, so just kind of starting from, let's look at Galton, from the middle of Galton, right here, you can see my mouse. City limits, urban growth boundaries, planned growth, and then rural reservation. So, then the statute, I'll pull that up, right here. This is the Tennessee County, I think it's six fifty-eight, one oh seven, so cities and towns, we just want to go generally, and comprehensive growth plans at the top fifty-eight. So what it says is no later than July of two thousand, two thousand and one, growth plan has to be submitted to the county, or sorry, submitted to the state level government planning advisory committee. And what it says is after the state adopts it, after a growth plan is so approved, all land use decisions made by the legislative body and the municipal or county planning commission shall be consistent with the growth plan. Now, I don't know of anybody that really follow group on that, to be honest with you, that use their comprehensive growth plan to actually structure the maintenance regulations, but you're supposed to, they're supposed to. And maybe some, maybe some of the, I don't know. But it talks here about the growth plan has to have those areas, some municipal corporate limits, urban growth boundaries, planned growth areas, and rural areas, that were approved, when it was all approved back in the year two thousand. And so to go back to Southern County. And so this is what everybody did, essentially, this is what everybody did in the year two thousand, was to say, these are the areas that are going to be urban growth boundaries, these are going to be planned growth areas, and these are going to, this is going to be rural reservation.
Where's block four on that?
Block four is down here in the urban growth boundary, that's in the urban growth boundary of the city of Galton.
Is it the red tip or the red tip?
The red, down there.
Oh, right.
Right, I can see my mouse, let me see if I can get my whole hand over here. Can you see that one there? Yeah, block four, block four is down in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And does that statute give any provisions about later definition of revised growth plans or anything?
Yeah, yeah, so, what you're supposed to do, what's acquired by the statute that everybody tries to do, very few counties actually do it, but every twenty years, you're supposed to update it. So we had one that was initially adopted in the year two thousand, and the year twenty twenty-two, we started in like twenty nineteen, looking at, updating some of these changes, the plan, to see if anybody wanted to change anything, essentially. And that finally got approved in twenty twenty-two, so we kind of, we applied the statutes as best as we could. It doesn't matter what it say you have to do every twenty years, but, you know, it says, you're gonna send it to the twenty-year horizon, essentially, and so that's what we did, was to come back. And when we updated it in twenty twenty-two, all that changed really was Galton added this area right here, where there were Liberty Creek schools, that the campus that is down to Long Island Drive. And then there was a slot in there here between the city of Andersonville and the city of Billisville. And y'all are familiar with where this is, this is very, very steep, this is, this is not particularly developable property, but Billisville, if it might be a future area, that they can grow back, and Andersonville, they want it, and so they just switch it.
Well, it's harder for them to serve, it's Long Island Drive. I mean, that's the major corridor.
Exactly.
City goes to serve.
That's exactly right.
I don't think it's gonna go in there residential.
And so, so we looked at this, and it's come up a few times, well, what does rural reservation mean, what does that mean we should do, what does planning growth mean, what does that mean we should do? The statute really doesn't say, it just kind of says, planned growth is an area where essentially some modern intensity growth or something like that is, and those terms aren't defined, rural is not defined.
But in the comprehensive plan, town plan?
Not, well, this is all from the statute, so this is all in the comprehensive growth plan statute, where they say you have to have these categories of property.
I assume they made it, but this board or a board like this could define what that is for their county.
That's exactly right, which leads me to my next one, so, if there's been some, you know, some question about forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, should we look at something else? If we, if we should, what should that be, how would we decide what should be? And so, since I, you know, have worked on the urban growth boundaries over the years, and had the opportunity to get familiar with those, and there's a statute that said that we're supposed to be consistent with it. If the planning commission, the county commission wanted to look at the rural residential zone, restructure, so maybe some of it has a larger lot size, some of it has a smaller lot size, probably the, using this as a basis to do so makes a lot of sense. It's not arbitrary or certain, because the statute says that your policies have to comply with this plan. And so the question might be raised is, you know, if this area around the city of Galton, that has public sewer available, can be a lot size, does it make sense for this area up here to take the lots? You know, and so that's, and that's a planning permission decision, you know, that's where you guys, that's some hard questions to go and answer, you know? What should lot sizes be across the county, if there is any appetite at all, looking at those and changing them. But what I, what I did was I had, there's a company called G O Joe, that we rely on sometimes for essentially charity work, to help us with G I S needs and that kind of thing. They work for the assessments office, primarily, but they'll help us out with stuff every once in a while. So one of the things I asked them to do, I said, take the rural residential problem, and apply it to that urban growth boundary, planned growth areas, and rural reservation areas that's in the comprehensive, in the comprehensive growth plan. And so what they did was they created this map for me, and they took rural residential, and just broken it into R, like R R one, or R two, or R three. And so this area here around urban growth boundaries corresponds, this area around the cities, is shown on this map as R R one, corresponds to the urban growth boundaries. This area that's planned growth, corresponds to, it's R R two, so it's, that's the planned growth areas in that plan. And the brown area is your rural reservation areas, or R R three. And so, you know, the planning commission could say, hey, the status quo is fine, we're gonna keep what we got. The planning commission could say, this is a terrible idea, we don't want to look at this, or the planning commission could say, you know, let's look at changing the minimum lot size in that rural part of the county, or the planned growth, and the urban growth boundaries, to make a distinction between those three areas. And that's something that could be, if the planning commission wanted to take a look at this.
I like structure, I like this idea, this concept, do have issue with the actual methodology, because it looks like the R two is just a offset of a given distance. And it doesn't take into consideration of topography, or, or transportation corridors. Looks like there's a little bit of transportation corridor in there in one spot, but I don't know that it's a big enough impact to me, though, just doing a sheer offset of, say, whatever that is, two miles, five miles?
Yep, yep, that's basically what they did, was a couple of miles outside of the urban growth boundaries.
I think in some periods, that's a correct plan, but if it's not, there's a topography, because I know around Northside Galton, it gets lost there. And I know that, you know, you've got one oh nine getting widened, and those major corridors, like twenty-five, I don't know that we should just say, it's an offset of so many miles, and that's now R two. I just think there ought to be more thoughtful into it than, than just that sheer offset. And I like, I like the concept of having multiple zoning based off of the concept that you're proposing.
Jeffrey, are you thinking of geographic?
Well, I'm just saying, from our other conversation we had earlier, if you have a border, if you have a major transportation corridor, that may lend itself to economic development, I mean, you want businesses or something like that, why would I, why not? You know, which is, which would be out there, two thirty-one, two thirty-one, twenty-five, and you'd need two at the top. And you picked it up a little bit there, is what I'm saying, but I don't know that it's, I know there's a major one going north to, or this, you have the one oh nine.
Yep, the one oh nine corridor is not reflected on that, that didn't, that didn't get shown as, as bigger.
It could be done, I mean, certainly, that could certainly. I'm not trying to kill the concept, I love the concept.
I'm curious.
I just think we need to dive deeper into this concept, and set some criteria, so the planning can move forward, like topography limits, you know, if you have something that's very steep, topography wise, you know, it may need to be a five acre lot, or better. And we need to finish like, probably R three, and that's, you know, something that.
Yeah, the area of southwest northern is very steep. And may not know it still well.
And I think that once we set that kind of criteria, somebody that, like G O Joe, can look at the topography limits, and they can pull out those areas very easily, quickly. And we, again, I think the criteria, it's forming the criteria, and then push to that max, and forth. Do you want your major corridors to have, you know, a quarter mile, major side, or you want to have a hundred yards, you know, so? And that would be the basis for your concept, and then if you have somewhere where it's not enough, you have a business company in, it could just be a zoning request, to do a bump out on that, be managed.
This is a first assessment, it was proven by distance, not by evaluating. Yep, I believe that's, that's what they did back in the year two thousand, and so this is still the same as it was in the year two thousand. And so, that's why one oh nine is not shown, it's, because that route didn't exist.
And to be fair, I mean, they were creating a new concept, I mean, and it's, at that point in time, the data derivative piece wasn't as easy as it is today. So I don't want to throw rocks to create, because, no, it's true, I think it's something we can build.
And so, we had talked earlier at the meeting, you know, lot sizes in other counties, and we could look at what other counties can do, as well, we talked about that, you know, one two, and Williamson County, for instance, they go onto a largely five acre, I think in there, I'm trying to remember, southwest kind of part of their county, where it's, is steeper, I may have it backwards, but the part, one side of their county is essentially five acre lots, it is difficult to build on. And that's just what they felt like a big point, as well, urban growth boundaries, they left those at acre, they can see the work done, it's worth eight or acres, and then their growth boundaries, they have villages, villages, and hamlets, and all that stuff that's in our comp plan, it's got a lot of discussion over the years. They have all those with their own zoning, and their own little plans as well, they go through each one of those little villages, center areas, and adopt a plan, like Leapers Ford, and all those, they have their own small area plan, the guides, growth and development in those areas.
So there's a huge issue with development, and we all understand that, you may have areas in the county that's not really easily driven by gravity, and that will be another criteria that you can consider.
You missed one first.
No, I was talking about, you're actually saying, you get a point, at this point, you're telling me you can't grade by gravity to the existing system. So there's a high spot, and, well, that sewer by gravity might be, a long ways around, it would pump double, so being lot size can be considered.
And so this is, all this is just a concept, a little framework, that we're throwing out there to kind of open up a discussion, you know, and of course, the devil's in the details, obviously, about, you know, how you do it, you know, what lot sizes y'all feel are appropriate, you know, is it acre in the urban growth boundaries, is it two, or is it five? Up in the north part of the county, and then that central brown part there, R three, or four, or what is it, you know, so that's, that's where some discussion of that, you know, would need to happen with the planning, that's up to you guys, and we can bring him out, and, and, you know, we can discuss it, but ultimately, we'll have to have some guidance from the local planning commission, which I want to see.
So is this map in the twenty-three project?
It is, it's, the comprehensive growth plan is shown in there, one of, there's a section devoted to the urban growth boundaries and that kind of thing, and so it's shown, now, that, that is out of the, our comp plan is out of date, for many reasons, but one of them is that this has since been updated, so what's in there in the comp plan is out of date. Because we have dated this, this map, for, you know, your urban growth boundaries in twenty twenty-two.
So this is really the location you were working on?
Yeah, it's, you know, what's in the comp plan is, you know, guidance, but if you try to rely on the map, some of the details that are shown in the comp plan, and all that stuff's out of date at this point, because it's pretty old.
This drill, just concept, drill down to redoing the comp plan?
There's been some discussion about, about re-tackling the comp plan, I don't know whether we'll get to that or not, but there's been some discussion over the last couple of years, I mean, I obviously feel like it's something that probably needs to be done at some point. Our comp plan was approved before highway one and nine was violated, so that's not a part of our comp plan, Liberty Creek Schools complex didn't exist at that time, the Castanet Springs historic overlay did not exist at that time, and I could keep going, there's all these things that have changed over the years, that our comp plan just doesn't take into account, our comprehensive plan. And so, at some point, we got, the comp plan probably needs to be updated into account for the reality we live in today.
Would you say it's been discussed, usually discussed?
Well, the last commission set aside some funds to update the county's comprehensive.
And so they were going to carve it out to?
If you recall, the U N R C, who has the contract for that, now, they, they got some work underway initially, around election time, I put the pause on it, because I didn't want to waste tens of thousands of dollars on something that might not be approved. And so there's a, there's a lot of money that's set aside, so we could certainly hire the U N R C or somebody else to come in and help us get that plan to fruition, to get something, but not be.
It is huge undertaking, you break the document, it's a huge undertaking, would overwhelm the staff, as much as they'd love to have, or is correct control, they'd have to manage, because it's just a big, it's a lot, it's a lot.
But what it is, though, is, I mean, what I told the commissioners I talked about, that we decided, and this is, the comprehensive plan update is separate from all this, the zoning stuff we're talking about, but update the comp plan, the new county commission has come in with an opportunity, really, to have their vision, be adopted, and be the formal policy of the county for any reason, the staff has direction, and the building community has direction, and citizens all have direction within that plan. And that's happened very often, the new group comes in and has that opportunity and wants to decide to do it.
Can we get the talk of this in the big room?
Yes, sir, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, and we can, one other thing I want to talk about, if we were to kind of get in. to get into, sort of looking at, at, you know, dividing up the rural residential zone and that kind of thing, one of the things I would like to do in, in coordination with that is, is a little bit more of a, a little bit of a map cleanup. Um, because we got, I'm trying to think who was on the commission, Mr. Williams and, and Luther were, were on the planning commission when the, the county commission took back the planning agreements a few years ago. So the areas outside, pretty much there were growth boundaries, roughly speaking, were under the city's jurisdiction until twenty-twenty. They had zoning and subdivision afforded within those and the county commission took that back, back in twenty-twenty and said, we're going to be in charge of those areas. And they applied rural residential zoning like a blanket, but when we took them back and said, it's ours now, we're going to apply that zoning, but the, the cities had been in charge of those areas since the seventies. And so they, they had their own zoning in their areas that have, if you look at Old Highway one there, where the highway department is and all that, that was all under the city Gallows jurisdiction until twenty-twenty. But it's under our jurisdiction now. It's all zone rural residential, which is not conforming. So none of that stuff is rural residential through there, right? And so if we're gonna, if we're gonna tackle this, I would, what I would love to be able to do is to go through those old planning regions and look at some areas that need to be brought into compliance and, you know, a lot of that stuff like Wilrow, you know, where Wilrow is and all that, they're there. That area is ripe to have either like light industrial zoning or commercial general zoning applied to it, something that's more realistic. Cause we get a lot of inquiries from people that are looking at the property, looking at this property in that area, that, that it's not going to be residential, should not be residential. I mean, that is a non-residential area. And I tell them, they say, what's the zoning, what do I need to do? I say, well, it's overall residential, you're gonna have to go through the rezoning process. And they're like, oh, you know, like, you know, why? You know, why can't I, you know, cause this is ready to go, this is, you know? And so one of the things that I would like to do is to go through, and that's just one example, there's a couple of areas in Portland as well, and to clean those up, apply the, the appropriate commercial or industrial zoning to those. And I think that, I've seen a lot of interest in, in those areas right now. Industrial property, heavy commercial property, there's a real shortage of that stuff across the county, you know, for warehousing and that kind of thing. And if we do it carefully, you gotta pay attention to what's going on around it, I think there's some opportunities for the economic growth that we were talking about earlier, but that'd be one of the things that the planning commission, the county commission can do to facilitate that.
Those, those existing businesses, are they just grandfathered?
Yes, sir. They're, they're grandfathered in, they can, they're, they're in time to continue their work, they can even do some expansions and that kind of thing. And so we, we don't penalize them, but when somebody new comes in, want to do something on a big piece of property in there, um, for instance, rural residential would apply us.
I know, I was involved when we, we actually, and actually one of the county, and...
In Portland, I mean.
We chose to, what of the existing zoning laws, we chose to just adopt that zoning. So there wouldn't be grandfathered and non-complacent immediately because sometimes on selling one billion dollar properties, that grandfather situation becomes a stick.
That's...
And so they're not able to afford loans to things that, just so rather than leave them in limbo, said if it's a commercial use, it's existing, commercial in that county, we apply that zoning to it and it worked out for a bit.
That's, that's, that's what I'm talking about especially, because we have the old zoning maps that the cities had, the Galton had to that area, the Ford had to their area, uh, who else, Hendersonville had some areas, um, not, Hendersonville didn't have very much, Galton, Ford were two biggest planning areas. Um, and we would be able to go through and apply an equivalent zoning to those and clean them up. Cause like Mr. Brad was saying, when, that, that non-conforming nature of those properties, that causes money to walk away from them. People will be trying to work out a deal and, and, and they can't, they can't get finance here or whatever because the bank is like, yeah, this is, this, this, this could go haywire us, um, right in the middle of the process. And so it's, it's something that can be done to a lot of property.
Because in that grandfather division, oftentimes if it's destroyed by fire, uh, that will cause this, you know, the zoning, actually that grandfather situation may not carry over if it's not built back in a twelve months or something that's not feasible.
Is that something this board could ask the county commission to be able to tap into the comprehensive planning bonds and get that corrected immediately or...
We can, I mean, I, I think as we're, as we're working on this zoning update, I'm, I would like to look at all those areas and just, I'd like to do it all at once if we can. I, I think it's painful sometimes for the, the planning commission, the county commission to have something, that, that part of what I was coming to them every two months with a, with a new set of changes and that kind of thing. So I'd like to get a more comprehensive look at the map and say, hey, here's a revised official zoning map, we want the kind of the planning commission to recommend it. If you do, then we go to the county commission and they can adopt it and we can clean those.
I think it's a great idea. I think, again, when we were talking about the economy, the economy, we kind of reached out to some of the counties earlier. I think that's a great place to start.
Yeah, I've been trying to encourage people in my case, because it's very private industrial, so that, that drive is natural towards, and drive by members of the home.
And that's, and that's an opportunity too, you know, if, you know, what I'm talking about is in the municipal level, or not municipal, but in, in proximity to those old planning areas, um, you know, the comp plan envisions areas around New Deal, um, more, probably more industrial, light industrial, light zoning, uh, up in that area. Um, you know, it envisions in Bethpage, uh, it, it envisions, uh, in that, whatever we call it, that area, that center, or whatever, um, it envisions, uh, non-residential zoning to be applied in there, some commercial to allow people to be able to do some things in there. Bethpage is another great example. We, you know, people, we, there's a process and we know we can get them through the process, but there's a lot of people, when they encounter that friction, you know, they're looking at a piece of property that's been used for commercial for a long, for eons in, in Bethpage, but they're, that's just an example of that, but, uh, it's being used commercial for a long time. They come in, they say, well, what's the, what's the zoning? And I say rural residential, that's the first friction. And then they start trying to understand, well, all, all that they have to do to get the tidings, that they're gonna have to have to do what they want to do, is go and tear something down, redo it or whatever, um, that is really the territory. And I think it, it, it degrades as opportunities for some economic development in places like Bethpage because the zoning is just there. And it's, it's, it's very difficult for, for the, you know, private individuals to go and change it one parcel at a time. I think that's, this is an opportunity for the planning commission to be able to take a look at, you know, what you want to do there.
In general plan, for the entire county.
Yep.
And you've done a really good job. Now, people are worried about other pieces of stuff, maybe you've done a really good job.
So if there are areas that, that are, as we're discussing, that are residential, so we can call it in the residential side until it's such a point that it not becomes a residence anymore?
Right, so, so if we looked at a piece of property, we'll, we'll probably try not to do too much of that where we, we were to go to, or, you know, a residential area and rezonate to, to commercial, unless they want to, you know? But, uh, but yes, if, if somebody's living in a house and they came to the county and said that they would want to rezonate as the commercial services or commercial general or light industrial or whatever, they would be able to continue to use as a non-conforming use until they got rid of it, give some else, sell it and then somebody's gonna scrape it and build something new. We're about as time. I appreciate y'all taking the time.
I have a quick question. So, looking at the, um, the preservation area, the plain growth area and urban growth boundary, um, I like this plan. It's not what, you know, you said ways of heritage, kind of like a five acre lots. I think that this kind of keeps that urban growth boundary, produce smaller lots, keeps anticipation for happening and then plain, plain growth is, it's more of a rural area anyways, most additional rate and then high school three, five acre lots, or two, three acre lots and R R one, where around one point seven, five acre lots. Just a suggestion.
I think once we find the criteria for what's going to define those three zones, will that be focused in on what lot size?
Go ahead for that.
When we set criteria, of what is R R two? Now, what, if, once we establish that criteria, what is R R two?
And so, with, with it, what we'll need to do, so this is, this is, this is not a lightly, this will be a little bit heavy, but, because it's gonna involve updating the zoning map and updating the text to create new districts and that kind of thing. So, uh, for, right, right now for rural residential zone, there, there's a description, what I think we're talking about is, you know, what is the R R zone? It's an area that's appropriate for low, it's for low density residential uses with some, yeah, 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 get right. So for R R one, R R two, R R three, we have to come up with, with, with descriptions of what, what are those areas and why do they have, you don't do anything arbitrary, right? So you need to define, you know, what, what characterizes this district, you know? R R three up on the ridge, areas with the topography, lack of available services that aren't compatible with the building, right? That's, you know, stacked up.
If I'm mistaken, if you go back, R R two, the county, on the rural residential across the boulevard, there was an estate blocks, which were three acres and there was, as Josh mentioned, there was a reason that they, at that time, fathers decided that these would be estate three acres and they specified the criteria. So it makes sense, rather than just say, well, it's a mile and bam, another mile, you know? And it makes some sense, you know, in a planning perspective.
And, and so what that, that area you're talking about, one of them was over here, there was estate B, um, that was off Black Rock Bridge Road, I think is where that was. And that was a hundred twenty thousand square foot, that was a lot size out there years ago. And then there was the estate A, uh, which was more Kirkland, uh, upper station, that area up there, um, that was eighty thousand square foot blocks in that area.
So in a way, it's a best-informed loss, but there was justification from a planning perspective, not just a dis... Now, with P D Ds, those still apply?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's, those have a vested property right, they're fully entitled and so they have a plan that's approved by the county commission and they, they can go do that plan essentially. Now, there are some callback divisions, I guess you might say that if, if a P D D gets approved and it sits on the shelf for a number of years, um, county commission or, or sorry, rather, the planning commission has an option to take it up and say, hey, you guys have a boot on this, we're gonna rezonate back to what you said, or something else. Um, but while that plan is active, so there's a vested property rights act that says three years from the time that the preliminary development plan is approved, um, they're kind of untouchable during that time that you have to let them, if you have the chance to develop it, they've got that program. And if, if they started work, you know, you really can't, you can't go back on them if they started normal payment.
If anybody would do the work study, uh, actions about time, if anyone, for lack of a couple minutes, to take a quick break, uh, please do so quick.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. That was a big break.
This is a presentation for our...
Yep.
... This is a commercial... It can be concerned for this is all, if you have to give your... In each of the provisions, twelve months, you know, whatever.
Most, most cities in the country are, like, also have thirty months. You know, if you just can take it for thirty months, then it's, it's open.
It's made in twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, uh, full after five PM, we have five members present, so we clearly have a form. Uh, first item is approval of April notice, each one receiving a property notice. If somebody has been motion to approve, I have one, deserves a, a second, any questions? Being on our table, please focus and I, opposed motion carries. Approval of agenda, is any additions or additions?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and motion to approve the agenda?
I have a motion.
I have a second. I have a second, is any questions? Being on our table, please focus and I, opposed motion carries. At this point, if, uh, if you would like to speak on a item, only agenda please come forward and sign up, if you have anybody. It's not necessary if your item is actually on the agenda.
The, we have one person signed up for the, uh, some set down to be the element, but that one is on both hearing here.
That's on both hearing.
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir.
The first item, some set down space, seven lots, uh, a foot, a mimic, uh, what we typically do is we ask y'all to do a presentation and after that we'll have a public hearing for some of the presentation, maybe answer some of the questions that you may have about this amendment. So at this point, Josh, uh...
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron. Commissioner, this, what this is, is a, is a request to amend an existing plan in development and to, uh, eventually ban the hurdles to subdivide existing law and then plan in development, some set down development, uh, which is located on, on Long Lake, um, east of, uh, east of Beach High School, the Goodways and, and, uh, west of the city Galton. Um, what this proposal to do is to divide a three point nine to acre home site into five home sites. Um, it's located on Little River Drive, uh, this property is on name and development, uh, originally classified, uh, when it was, uh, initially, it's located in the planning development, uh, which allows, uh, at, at that time, uh, I believe nine thousand and short of the lots. Um, the property is currently owned by Shure Tennessee Holdings, uh, the project engineer and designer, designer and design, uh, leads actual, is an independent here this evening, uh, to, to represent this island. Uh, this is an area of, of the subject property, um, it's surrounded partially by other, other components of the development. Um, this is phase seven, which is a single circle table, was, was under construction, still is under construction, but it's almost complete, uh, they'll be looking for the final top coat on the road here before too long. This is the tension basin, the center's phase seven, and that will serve these lots as well. These lots over here are dependent phase four. Um, and I'll show a little, I'll show a little more detail here in a bit, but the big picture what's happening is I look at some of the front part of this lot and then some of the back part and add it to this lot. Um, this particular lot is owned by the Melker, so this is one of the first instances I've ever seen with the Melker, this property actually lives adjoining to it. And so it was taken, the rear portion of this property and just added to this lot. And so that's part of the planning and development as well. And so a little bit of background, some set downs planning and development originally got through back in two thousand six, uh, basis five, six were printed by the planning commission and, uh, marking the class of the approved in March twenty-fourteen. Um, a rezoning and a P D D amendment was approved by the set by the planning commission in November of twenty seventeen, um, and the county commission ended in December, thankfully I wish I'd actually heard about in October, I don't have time, but anyway, it was, it was, the rest of the base seven, that, that was rezoned in twenty seventeen. Um, so of course involved the hurdles and phase four, five, six, seven, there's one lot, this particular lot, um, three, four acre lot, and that was set aside as a future estate type lot, but the thought was at the time, uh, this long far hand work in the county that, uh, the, the understanding was the intent was the developers... Thankfully, which I actually heard about in October, I don't know if I, but anyway, it was, it was, the rest of base seven, that, that was rezoned in twenty seventeen. Um, so of course, involved the approvals of phase four, five, six, seven, there's one lot, this particular lot, um, three, four acre lot. And that was set aside as a future estate type lot, but the thought was at the time, uh, this long far hand work began, that, uh, the, the owner's family was intent was the developer's son was going, or son of Long Road was going to build a house on this lot. Um, those plans since changed and they, they put this lot up for sale, and I believe that the current developer had the option on, on the property at this time. And so what, what he's trying to do is to get a rule to amend the P D D, uh, to allow this option to be subdivided in the fashion that he, he wanted to do. Uh, this is the public notice, this is a, this is a, a amendment to the planning development, so for anybody that might not have seen what he's come through, we treat these just like a new, just like a new P D D. Um, so that's what we know the county commission, um, when we talk about these, when they start before them. Um, if you want a chance to make in the development, uh, the plan doesn't have to be approved by the county commission, if you want a chance to do it, also has to be approved by the county commission. So lots of safeguards, I would make sure that nobody goes in and does anything that wasn't in vision, um, without getting approved. Uh, one of the things that they are requiring, they fire some, they have a neighborhood meeting, and this is the notice that they sent out, uh, to the county, to the property owners in the city. And that meeting was settled, um, on April nineteen, um, I was attending this at that meeting, and there was a pretty robust turnout, people from neighborhood, uh, the county commission for that area as well, uh, Bushville was there, um, and, and, and here we have a site. Overall, it was pretty, uh, pretty effective meeting, but, but everybody understood what was proposed. And summaries were partly provided by the developers, they did, uh, they did provide some, understand how I did the, the discussion and then what everybody talked about at the meeting. Um, now, there's a lot of discussion about architecture, if you want to know what the houses are going to look like, uh, questions about, you know, uh, Bud, and then the road and the swamp water, and those kind of things that are typical. And, uh, the, uh, the developer presented and answered those questions, and they had an architect there as well. Uh, this is the public notice sign that, that's required, and it's like a new, new application to that, uh, zoning action signing out, uh, on the road running. We see the other lots back in there behind it, they're phase seven, uh, they're, they're determined to be, uh, built out. And so this is the summary that, uh, Ray Spencer provided to us some years ago, um, showing the phase seven here, the P D D, and then this is the lot in question right here. This is the overall, uh, development phases, uh, four, three, seven, here, but this, this is the lot again, that they're looking at. Gonna buy it up, just another closer view. And this is what, uh, this book has turned in for real design, I'll, I'll see, just a little bit, there we go. And so as you can see, these, these lots are, uh, in the half acre and above range, they were, uh, about twenty-seven thousand square feet, which is a little bit bigger than the lots, um, that are across the road and in the vicinity. And again, as, as I mentioned, the rear portion of that lot is supposed to be added on to the developer's, um, lot, where he lives, right here. Uh, they, they provided this all information, we voiced it in the act comments, for, for our address, um, those of the, of the house, uh, envelopes shown on the lot, just to show that they'll fit. And the setbacks, setbacks for this, uh, P D D development are very exactly the same as the setbacks that were required, uh, front side, uh, for the, the rest of the lot. So you only know in terms of the point of houses are origin, and it's a different phase, houses will have a different look, I believe there's going to be more custom design approach, but I would, I have to speak to that. Uh, they didn't provide this with representative architecture, I didn't put it all on the presentation, but I just wanted to, to show everyone what the, the whole of the house is, uh, that was going to look like here. Uh, so some notes, if this P D D amendment is approved by county commission, uh, after all the planning commission or this decision, uh, then they will have to come back to the planning commission with a preliminary flat, no actual agreement this lot. So pretty much the P D D amendment is just pretty much the concept, uh, the actual planning actually has to be approved by the planning commission again. So, uh, what will require at that time is a full set of construction and drainage plants and calculations. Um, the preliminary flat, all the places we're going to require at that stage, uh, mentioned that there's a tension basin across the street, we're, we're going to, we're going to make sure, and Mr. Wilson says, the civil engineer, he will make sure that, um, that tension basin across the street can accommodate, um, the additional stormwater from these lots, it's not really much, but, but it is something. And so we need to make sure that, that the, the tension basins exist and handle it, and, and they're not going to have any outside impact to people to the rear, to the side as well. And so that makes it out, it's the session I'm having here, that's the case. Um, there's no public improvement necessarily that'll be required, uh, the road's already in place, curb's already in place, they won't put sidewalk in. Um, street lights will need to be, uh, put up, I think, thirty-two street lights for this, this portion of the development. Um, but I'm sure, uh, to ensure that, uh, the roadway's not damaged, uh, but we're having some discussions now, we're not going to say that they were, we're thinking about, you know, if the phase seven, uh, section gets paved, uh, that might be, not be desirable to get that paved, um, right now, if they're going to kind of go to these additional lots, we might have to, you know, hold off on the final code of asphalt until this gets, gets further along, but, but we'll see about that, I don't know whether we'll, we'll be able to wait that long. But it's not a common first for our sure to be posted, um, uh, for, for things like this, uh, we have to do tear for it, the new road, um, we got sure to make sure that they, they own it fixed. Um, and surety is what, street lights, sidewalk, and all that, I'm sure everybody knows that. So that's that, so the planning commission being asked to make a recommendation this evening, a positive or negative recommendation. Um, after that, it'll go to the legislative committee for two readings, and then the full county commission for a vote. Uh, they can't say that, that their question, uh, to the planning commission, uh, if it's approved by the county commission, then the plan amendment will be going to affect you, the market is entitled, uh, as I've talked about in the study session at that time, per state law. Um, as noted previously, any, any future construction activity, but I have to, before you can do anything, they're actually physically go after this preliminary flat and the construction plans, that the, the planning commission will have to approve. And once they do, uh, they will even come back to the next one with a final plan, I mentioned before, state law would technically allow, uh, these folks to just turn in one supplemental to the planning commission. And we not even have to do that, I may even say law actually allowed me to approve this, and I started to do that, but, uh, our regulations don't allow that at this time. And so the, the county commission will have to offer, I don't think they'll do that. Um, so they will have to come back for preliminary and final type approvals. And so Mr. Chairman, the questions are on the screen, about positive or negative recommendation, uh, or to defer, and again, Mr. Wilson is in attendance this evening, if you have any questions for him.
Okay, at this point, excuse me, at this point, I hold up the vote carry, uh, you said there was an individual would like to speak?
Exactly.
Well, I'll still leave it open, is anyone from the public who would like to speak, uh, at this vote carry, open and the developer's representative? I don't think it's necessary for the engineer to speak at the vote carry, they can speak directly to the commission, so at this point, I declare the vote carry closed. Just so we have any comment or answer.
Uh, no, sir, I think, uh, Josh covered everything really well. It is a little unique to, uh, very often the developer will actually, just, the devil's going on his backyard, so he's got as much incentive as anybody to put out a nice product and tell people excited, uh, and has a lot of passion in making sure that what he puts out makes all the neighbors happy. We, uh, we can tell that from the neighborhood meeting, it's kind of close knit community, so he has a lot of incentive to make sure, uh, what goes in out there looks nice.
If you don't just second, uh, us, the vote carries, this reaction in discussion, oh, let me get a motion on the floor, so we discuss it, so he can ask, so possibly any questions anyone may have.
I'm making a motion, number one.
Number one?
Making a motion. You want to put some, number one, for the positive recognition.
Is there a second?
There is.
Okay, we have discussion, uh, is there any question from the representatives, engineer, while you're there? Thank you. We have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? Being on, on, please focus and I, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Come on to sketch flat, set comments.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for sketch flat approval, uh, for nineteen lots contained on, on seventeen point six one acres on Cade's Ben Road. Um, owner of this property is the state of LA quarter, um, developer, Southern Land Marter Partners, represented by Cal Gentry, uh, Civil Angling Company, uh, solicited as the official representative on application received. Um, property is on rural residential, again, on Cade's Ben Road, um, but for those nineteen lots, they are seeking to utilize provision, uh, the, the provisions of the county's underground resolution, uh, how lot size is given, which down to one half acre, public service level, uh, which is a designation. Um, there's twenty-seven percent of overall site, this, this is supposed to be open space, of some four point seven five acres above the seventeen acres. And waters here are provided by White House Utilities here. Um, this property is located within the Galt and Urban Grove boundary. Um, again, this is the sketch plant, and so it provides the planning commission with information and opportunity for input. Um, there are no vested property rights there to make the sketch flat approval, whether it's approved or, or whatever. Um, uh, but any questions about, you know, what that is, is a sketch plant, um, so our, for the county's subdivision, there are many things that have been said in that mission, what it says is, sketch plant is a sketch per per for you for the preparation of the preliminary flat, a more final flat, and this might, uh, to enable to subdivide at the same time and expense. And this would keep raising the reaching general agreement with the planning commission, that's the whole of the plan, the objective to these regulations. And so the point of this, the sketch flat is essentially to negotiate with the planning commission, the design of the development. Um, now, the planning commission can deny any rights necessarily, um, that, that, that they may have, but as far as road alignment and, uh, block configuration, and that, and this is the planning commission's chance to have input in the way that the plan is designed, uh, part of that, and maybe they'll see they've expended sure money, uh, on, on, on preliminary flat, especially on land lays and the normal studies and, um, construction plans, I'm sure. And so this is the subject property here, uh, you see it's a seventeen plus acre tract, uh, with a, a driveway connection. Uh, the public road, this proposed being, sharing with Josh, I'll just a little bit, will utilize the same line or, or between the two ponds, uh, or, I guess, through, through one pond, I don't think connected pond, I don't think it did. Um, and then there's a, there's a house here in the middle, a substantial single family home, uh, that's supposed to be removed as part of this, uh, development. So to kind of put it in context a little bit, uh, this area here, on the side of Cade's Ben Road, is, uh, is, is in the city of Hendersonville. Uh, this area over here is in the city of Galton. And, uh, the area here, uh, can you try to learn how to do that? Um, there, here, in green, is in the, is rural residential zone, um, the Urban Grove boundaries. Um, I believe, uh, Cade's Ben Road marks the dividing line between the Hendersonville, Urban Grove boundary and the Galton, Urban Grove boundary over here. Uh, this is the sketch plant that's been turned in, um, by, uh, uh, Civil Angling Company, kind of zoom in just a little bit here. Uh, you see there are nineteen lots, uh, with, with open space in various areas proposed, open space here with the bond going through, uh, open space in the, uh, the island, I believe, proposed here, uh, on, on, on landscape median here in the roundabout. Um, and then there's the landscape buffer here, um, on the corner of the park property as well. Uh, you'll notice that, uh, there is a missile alignment here with the road, where it's basically Cade's Ben Road, and then there's subdivision across the way, and I'll return to that here just a little bit. Um, the street view here, uh, this is looking, looking toward the driveway, toward the houses, the houses they removed here. Um, this is, this is the driveway, uh, this is the southern most pond, northern most pond over here, better view of it, or, or. So the public road come off Cade's Ben Road, and again, that, the main, the house there, it was back here toward the center of the property. Uh, this is in the suburban site of the county's underground issue plan. Um, the dominant little amnesty residential, um, one building, yeah, urban acre, is what's called for in the suburban site. Uh, but the post lot, this is a, is a very big requirement of the county's underground resolution for lots with access to the border and sewer. Um, again, twenty-seven percent of the site is dedicated to common open space, there will have to be an A Z O A, this belt is basically approved, um, the plan paying on, full water, structure, and open space in the development. Um, this over here on the right side is just from the county's underground resolution, where it does talk about, uh, the block production, um, out of the half acre, and then it public service level. Um, drainage, uh, the belt needs to submit construction plans and drainage calculations to the civil or preliminary flat. Uh, this belt is of size that most coverings will be required for P D D, um, and maybe, uh, strength of weather determinations as well, required by P D D. Uh, roads, uh, the belt has a mixed well, it's got a destruction of one public roadway, uh, it must be restricted to all public camera standards. Um, one, that is very unusual, uh, I don't have an issue or, or just something that's still working. Uh, this, this big public road will go in between two existing ponds, uh, not seeing a new, new public street constructed in that way, it could certainly be done, uh, maybe questions about how it gets done. But it, but it can be done, but it'd be a little, just a little bit unusual. Uh, the new road that's provided, as I said, there's a missile alignment, I'll go back, I think I actually slide next, uh, to show it, I mean, it does align with this gassen street, I don't know if I can say it across Cade's Ben Road. So there is a turning conflict there, uh, as well, so the planning commission, uh, you know, they'll have to take a look at, at, at correcting that, or, or maybe okay with it. Um, Cade's Ben Road is a county road with this location, outside this suburb of Meyer, like a roadway, uh, for the county's major third, third rail, to visit the very little traffic road, they don't have traffic counts. Um, I meant to look at the, uh, so I can see if they had any, uh, that is something that the, uh, planning commission can look at, with that one's additional traffic information. Uh, traffic impact study is not strictly required, just something that's discussed before, do the project size, it's, it's a nineteen lots. Um, but given a lot of issues and that kind of thing, if, if the, uh, planning commission does have traffic safety concerns, um, if they're in the vicinity of the project, um, with traffic problems and that kind of thing, then that is something that the, uh, planning commission can ask out to look into prior to the approvals. And this is what I'm talking about here, just a little bit more detail, you see, this is the, the proposal of the road is going to follow this, this alignment right here, and this is an existing, this is a substantial subdivision here across the street. And that, that missile, I mean, the problem is certain conflicts, it might be more ideal if, if there's a way to figure out how to get the roads lined up, if that's possible. That would involve filling this pond, uh, as well, I'll go back, drainage impacts are maybe to look at. Um, utilities, fire protection, uh, water series, they provide a lot of facilities, um, that will need local firefighters for this development, which we can be supported. Um, and, uh, fire protection will be provided by the, by the, by the park department, they might be number one, by the park department down there, I'm not sure about that. Uh, that's that, uh, the sketch flat is approved this evening, uh, they need to, they'll receive preliminary and final type approval from the planning commission. Um, if the planning commission does have concerns for the proposed open road or lot layout, um, they can request that the sketch flat be revised and submitted, um, again, as to reach agreement with the developer, that's the point of the sketch flat, if there's questions about that. Um, that, that means submit a search plan and drainage accounts, and any other required studies that they're going to fill upon, they may need to technical studies and that kind of thing as well, uh, with the preliminary part. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you have questions on the screen, the first thing to approve, uh, the second to, uh, with, with conditions, uh, the second without conditions, uh, the third to deny it. Uh, we probably need to look at specific provisions of the county subdivision regulations for one, deny the plant. And the last would be, uh, to, to defer by it in order to, uh, get initial information or revise slightly out of the planning commission going to. Um, the example motion for the, to approve, uh, has three conditions, uh, the first is basically the old county department showing that, um, H O A will be established, uh, the media traffic impact setting to a technical report, uh, with the preliminary type construction plan. So I've got to try and answer any questions that would have been represented with the tenants, uh, this evening.
Civil Angling Group, I'm Marty Cook here on behalf of, uh...
Go ahead, turn your mic, please. Thank you.
I'm Marty Cook here on behalf of, uh, the, of Mr. Gentry, uh, our engineer, had a child, was graduating, and I cannot be here, so I asked him here on behalf. But we're in agreement with, uh, all staff comments and certainly willing to work with Mr. Boyd and engineering to see, kind of, what that roadway alignment looks like and the impact on environmental finds, but we'll, we'll do whatever, uh, as best whatever is needed there.
Is there a question?
I have a question for staff, once we get finished with this, sir.
Number one?
So I have a question for staff, once we get finished with this, with this conference, thank you. Um, Josh, I know last meeting or so, this board voted to change the lot size provision that this is under, with this being a sketch flat and having no vested rights, how is that going to play out if the county commission accepts the, uh, vote of this board on lot size variance?
Well, I think, that, that, um... That's going to get off into lawyer territory very quickly, you said they, that, they did bring their attorney here this evening, um, uh, what the statute says, the state law says that you miss, uh, the approval...
...to turn it down now. It consistently sketch plates has been sent through when we deal with these issues at the preliminary when all the work is done and the engineering and the traffic studies and all those things that require. So with that, that goes just about.
I will say. Hi, Mr. Chairman. And for example, there are other things that I said by recently, I think Senator Beryl turned in that was going over on, basically the exact same concerns. I don't know that they might propose to turn this sketch flat down this evening. I think there was a referral request that had been put on before, but there were requests to turn down sketch plates for geographic, geologic kind of concerns and that kind of thing then last year probably. But like I said, I don't know that they might propose to turn it down by this evening.
We'll we'll motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm out of the address that come in because the sketch flat was the planer discussing also had an wanting to examine what it's out and do the body of the property, concern about safety. So it was it was not the sole contributing factor for turning that into that.
I believe, but I've I've stood here and seen us approve enormous amounts of sketch plates because we say it's basically, you know, it's just an idea on a sheet of paper and put the details within the bill when they submit to preliminary plat and we can turn a preliminary plat down. So in in the past, we sort of, that's all, that's where I was going with that. The motion's on the floor and it's will of the body.
I just wanted to say not concerned as well as a population and they're pretty in line with Commissioner Pond, but I mean, I need notes as we were going through and the road between the ponds, I think it needs to align if that's even possible, we only work on, that's one worry concerned. And my second concern is the drainage, which was only take away those two ponds. I'm just not sure which way the drainage goes from front back, back to front, half and half and miss along and road and then a traffic study. I understand this needs to be deferred. I'm not asking for a demand, I'm asking for a different. So would you say that?
So are there, your motion is actually still on the floor, aren't there? And your your motion, go back to your motion, please. Your motion, and there is a second to defer this item, that's the motion on the floor, it has a second. So is there any other discussion? Being in our favor both, this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Big one?
Nay.
Nay.
I oppose.
What was this?
Oppose.
Oppose. I oppose also. I'm going to oppose because I think that that if we treat this any differently, then we have any sketch that plat in the past, there's some concerns that could be raised.
I think we'll probably be a vote, if the vote is not to the further, we're going to have to have an official vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to come back. So the motion, item four has failed. Is there another motion?
I move for item one with the addition of an item D, asking for a interest realignment to the cross street.
Okay. So you're going to add D to one?
That's correct.
Okay, would that not be part of the traffic study? Or you can actually add four?
No, sir. The sketch plate, four sketch plate is.
I mean, I'm using the traffic study.
It's, the one sketch plate is that the planning commission sees design deficiencies to tell the developer, we don't want to see that, we want to see this instead. And so if the planning commission wants this sketch plate to be revised, to make that change, there are probably two options. One would be to defer it, then come back next month, which was proposed and then vote down. The other would be to approve it, but that is the testing condition of approval, that it does get realigned to the line across the street, which I think will be intended that that condition that she added.
So the motion is to add item D to show the alignment of both the street across the street. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
You second? Okay. Motion been properly seconded. Any other discussion at this time? Being in our favor for the motion, please focus, say aye.
Uh.
Uh, aye. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
Commissioner Pond?
Nay.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Mr. Williams?
Uh.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
And Mr. Brad?
Yes.
Item two passes. Next item is Roman, Roman Art, Roman Road Art Estate, step comments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is another sketch plate, the big seven residential building lines across nine twenty-five acres on a larger track on Bubba Ridge Road. It contains one hundred seventeen acres of properties, a rural residential, a property served by Richard Graves, a water service dislocations provided by White House Utilities, lots will be served by individual seventy things. Again, to be very able to sit with the last application, sketch plate provides the planning commission with information opportunity for input, no waste of property or action may be with the sketch plate program. And again, that will highlight the text, the heat text areas, it's enabled the sub buyer to save time and expense, reaching a general agreement for the planning commission as to perform on the plan and the objective of the rate of payments. So this is an area photo of the subject property here. This is the sketch plate. I'll put it in there. I've addressed Mr. Graves until he sent me a revised sketch plate that showed the entire property, and I did not put it in our presentation. But what Mr. Mr. Graves is proposing here is seven residential building lots here that do need a flat of vertical less than five acres, and the remainder of the property is to be divided up into tracks in excess of five acres. If the planning commission wants to try and get the money, it was in time for Mr. Graves to send that to me, if y'all don't agree with that. Utilities by protection, these one item will be required for regulations of ownership, those dedicated fire acres cannot be provided at this location. The county subdivision regulations allow for an included identification to the volunteer fire department if that is standing solid. To pay less than three to four thousand dollars to dedicate to the volunteer fire department if they can install that. The project council, Bubba Ridge Road, that's a likely route halfway away to one hundred fifty of the lot units. Set of construction plans will be required at the building class age, and another stretch will be required for this project, it will serve one acre. This is where it is, it's in the rural place site, it's just outside of the former number of the boundary. Overall, the patent calls for one unit per five acres, and the capital overall density, and I pulled that over sketch plate, we'll need discussion. Mr. Chairman, to show that it's overall property is set to look like, but overall densities are required in excess of one acre by the area. Next step, so they received preliminary and the final five quarter from the planning commission. And Mr. Chairman, if you have a motion on the screen to approve it, with conditions, without conditions, to deny it, or to defer it, and that in order to provide additional information or revise site layout. And Mr. Graves, anything else you have?
Uh, given the question, Mr. Graves?
If not, then take a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second? I have a second. Second question. Being in our favor, our favor, please focus, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Pond?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams?
Uh.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
And Mr. Brad?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, I missed the state, the state section two, preliminary plat, step comments, please.
Yes, sir. This is an eleven lot subdivision, lot range of an acre to three point five acres, located on Highway two fifty-nine, Filling Road, is on rural residential, property served by Richard Graves, and the sketch plate is on it. This is an area photo of the subject property here. You see these new lots here were sub about a while, some time ago. Right here, this is my reply, I reported, West State section base one, December of twenty twenty-one. An overall sketch plate, overall four, Mr. Graves, November of twenty twenty-two, that was approved by the planning commission at that time. This is the preliminary plat that's proposed. You see, block configuration is supposed, there is a pond in the middle. We're not proposing any detention with this particular piece of property. Lots on the south side of the road, pretty, pretty well scattered out, it'd be difficult to do detention there. There is a pond, the function of this section has detention for lots already here on the north side of Highway two fifty-nine, and lots used. Utilities by protection, there is a hydro convicted on the sketch plate, that serve serve the lots. The four utilities are requiring fifteen hundred feet of line improvements, where the line can be left aside for more than six inches, that's three out of the delivery of the tanks. Happy Roadway, we ended up paying up along all roadways, the highway department will be consulted to determine if a binding of flipping coverage required. Highway two fifty-nine is active, and so the collect roads, those six jurisdictions, proposed office, air brake apartments, they turned in EBSC plan and their evaluation, several patrol plan along the range calculations with that preliminary plat. No stretch for D act will be required. This is the, when I say EBSC plan, I will show you guys what that looks like off of the probably, but what that does is to show us how construction will be used. These are driveway connections here, construction entrances, they're intended to keep blood off the street. And this is the the second phase of it, where they show, or don't we say, usually they'll check. So as far as outfalls, that are required, is looking on the balance of the site, is at the, where where water is going to leave the site. And so in the grade analysis, the folks clearly designed, identified four outfalls that I have here, the outfalls just have a, a knowledge here, apologies to Mr. Duncan, but it's a ditch essentially most of the times what that is, but I don't know, it's a ditch or something. So they are required as you can see here, provide peak, peak flow comparisons, pre-development, post-development, their calculation, initial reduction, and and off-site runoff after development, those folks are prior to development. When I first heard of it, in the little development county, I always had a wonder how that's possible, like even if I have a reduction in runoff. And it's because the the property they have dirt from farmland, which is all dirt, two yards, which is grass. And so the grade calculations will show when the location runoff is more being absorbed by the the grass yards than what is in the section of hard land, dirt that's there, when it's sold or whatever. This is in the rural place site, we have a comprehensive plan. Next step, if this one name plat is approved, we got a high level here. And either proceed to find five quarter from the planning commission, construction plans in favor by the county engineer, they can either say permits, and once all that's done, they'll obtain their zoning and land service ability permits, for any division wants. So, Mr. Chairman, there's, if you have a motion on the screen to approve the preliminary plat, or to to with conditions, without conditions, or to deny, obviously the referral is option as well. The conditions other there with the motion to approve would be that the EBSC plan approved by the county engineer prior to start construction, and there are construction inspections that he sent to do with the final by application. And with my presentation, Mr. Chairman, motion carries, and then a seat for this one as well.
In the panel motion to approve?
I have a question you can stand.
I'm sorry.
I have a question you can stand, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
It has a motion for it.
For Mr. Graves, okay.
I'm sorry. Josh, this is in the, which zone area is it?
Yes, sir. And the.
Compliment.
Yeah.
It's in the rural place, that's a good problem here, it's on the top of the map. It's in the rural place site, I think I said that.
And so, does it have a recommended lots size?
It's, it has an overall density of a recommendation of one unit per five acres for developers that come through.
Which is pretty much what the neighborhood is, what I can tell. So, all I would say to this commission is, if we're going to follow our rules, why do we have them? And I'll leave it at that.
This slide for that.
So, yes, there's a misalignment that's existed since the comprehensive plan was about to back in twenty ten, and recommended, and the order that's what our state law says is that in the rural place site, very large density, one unit per five acres is what we're supposed to be, but the county's never amended the zoning resolution to actually implement that. That's not something, and there was discussion at the time, which you already presented in that discussion, I think in some minutes, regardless of the intent of that language right there, was what you already pointed out, twenty ten, that it meant something different than the planning commission thought it did, I think. But it was included in the plan anyway, and so there's a misalignment, they were talking about compliances, what the zoning code says. And so the zoning says that you did forty thousand square foot lots, which complies says five acres. I mean, I would have to say probably, and I'm no longer, I always have to say that to you guys, but probably, the zoning code prevails probably in that question like this, as far as what a property right is. But that said, if the county mission feels like this is what we need to do in this particular area, when we talk about this session, will enable the the planning commission to do that, if we want to increase the lot size to line up with that five acre requirement, then that's something to be done.
And I said, and I said, Mr. Pond?
Yes, sir. When we were in those discussions in two thousand and ten, farms like this, I think we meet the heart of the of the comprehensive plan, because I think the density, if we took the units that's going to be allowed to be built there versus the like, the overall mass in the farm. And then that was one thing that we discussed in two thousand and ten, that the the amount of houses that's going to be put on that particular farm, you see, should will, I would have to calculate to see for sure, but I think it's close to being one unit per five acres. It wouldn't necessarily all have to be five acre tracks, when you think about it. That's what I said to him that day, are we looking at all five acre tracks, or we're looking at forty thousand or whatever. So it was a mix in that, and some of these farms have got issues that, like you said, density as far as and topography and stuff like that. So you might need that one to five, and some may be smaller, and some may be larger, in this case, because this farm just can't be cut up any further. Okay? Now, I hope that, I know that don't make you sad about your your heart.
Well, no, I think, and I, I really want to understand, I'm not, I'm not, you know, doing this.
No, I understand, I just wanted you to know where the conversation was in two thousand and ten.
But you're you're saying that with the easement that runs to the back part of the farmland land, you don't think that there'll ever be further development back there?
There is some, some areas, if you look at the topography, and we took that into consideration.
That's the sketch plate, Mr. Chairman.
If you go to the EBS, the Rose and Patrol Plan, it shows that the outfall coming, that is a little bit better. But you see that big area right there that's encircled and regular, that's a, that's a low depression area, and there's a couple of them, so there's room to build the houses around those on the bigger lots, and there'll be ten little acres, one maybe five. So I think that we met the spirit of the plan, even though we got some, we got a couple of acre lots, we got a couple, two acre lots. I think we've met the spirit.
Right, I, I'm just a little surprised that the neighbors have, and and it's fine that they don't, they, they obviously have no problem with it. I, I just, because there's so many five acre lots there, it seems like at some point it was followed, but they.
To the east of this property, there's actually quite a few small lots, and to the west, we're going to bring up the tax man, but there are some small lots to the to the west of this property.
I see four or five directly to the east and.
There's some five acre tracks to the west, and to the north, there's some smaller tracks. So it's a mixture out here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can give it if we're here.
It, we have a motion.
We don't have a motion. Any other questions for the planner or for Mr. Graves? If not, then take a motion to approve?
I'm moved for item one, with conditions.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
The chairman, if there's a second motion, take it. Do I just hold?
I don't know, you can second the motion.
I don't have a comment. We talked about following rules and being consistent, and we were supposed to follow our own rules order, and we do not. I don't think, and the attorney incorrect me from wrong, but I don't think the chairman is even supposed to have an opinion on a motion of, I think he votes in a time, but I don't, I think it's the, so I'm correct. Can you, can vote? But can he vote to the second, something, or should he? Okay, and can he say he's going for a motion to approve, because it may be, it may be, it's a, I'm just curious, I just want to know the right or proper.
Okay.
Correct, twice, actually, maybe three times now. I just want to know the proper procedure, because I wanted to come back on, it seems like everybody's scared to vote or let vote, so that's not really the topic of the lot. So the badge of all the segments have been made in line, and he's getting the right.
I'm sorry, I think you're in a conversation.
There's been no second on the motion.
Put the mic, please.
There's been no second on the motion, so it dies.
It passed the last, it passed the last. The reason I had moved on, excuse me, sir, the reason I had moved on is because there was a legal question asked to county attorney, and I was waiting for her to get that, because she might be the one that would actually move it forward. So I wasn't delaying it, I was trying to give her the best information. So motion dies. Is there another, is there another motion? And and I do think I need a legal opinion, as chairman. If, which law, in essence, the community made it, we should adhere to the laws on the books. So if I understand the planner correctly, there's something on the books that allows, that allows this to happen. So I guess the legal opinion is which one of these conflicting laws should the planner commission adhere to. And my personal goodness, and my experience in these things in the past, is that precedent is going to take place if you've done something for fifteen years, you know, you need to change it or correct it, rather than just start turning things down. So I think the answer is, you know, is to change it, if the governing body would like to clear it up or change it, rather than having a long legal thing about whether which law prevails, because we've actually not adhered to this in the past, and it's been there. And I appreciate you bringing the attention.
No, I just want to be consideredly correct.
Sure.
And so, as far as the tie vote, which here is where we're at right now, what the bylaws here, bylaws here say, in the event of tie vote, the motion may be made and voted along considering the particular item in business. If the vote remains tied, it will descend the project and not receive the approvals requested, and therefore be sent and denied. So if a, if we made a motion on the floor, then the the tie vote.
I don't think we have a tie vote, because.
Oh, we have a second.
So, so we've not had a vote, which also we've not had a second, that.
Yeah, if the, the court of law rules, if you don't have a second, it dies. If you have a tie vote, it's going to die.
Yeah.
So those are the two things I think that are being discussed at the moment.
Correct, that's right.
So that's where we're at, and we don't have a second. Excuse, entertain another motion, that's a different story. But as far as that specific motion.
It's complicated. Yeah.
So as far as we're talking about changes, procedural changes through all of this, I think, John Carter, great point, this is a good time to get all this in these bylaws that you are amending and getting clarity through the bylaws.
I agree with you hundred percent. So where we are now, we have a, we, the motion that Mr. Duncan made, died for the lack of a second, so we started from scratch. So, is I understand it, do we have to, if we're as then, so do we have to take action by the next regular meeting, or is it assumed?
Well, I mean, the typical, you know, if a motion is made, doesn't have a second, motion was to approve, and it did not receive a second, and so that.
Customarily, it's deferred until a final decision, if you imagine.
Okay. So my question is, if he doesn't have any action, there are some consequences when you don't have any action.
Right, so if there's no action taken on this plat, then then a six day period of the time that it was received by my office is automatically approved.
That's small, that's where I was.
That's, that's taken all, taken all the time.
So can we add number four to defer?
This, this absolutely, yeah, that, that was just, I wish I had one more, I have to put that on there. But the number one is motion.
Sure.
Make a motion to defer.
The motion's made promptly, second to defer, just from, because I'm, I'm having a vote, just, 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 just to give me some insight, the defer is to, to receive what?
Well, because I'm confused as to what we should do as a body, do we follow the one acre, or do we follow the five acre? I'm just confused about it. I just, and, and, you know, write it off the fact that I'm new, but I know that there are several properties in Castillo Springs, for instance.
Sure.
Have become a real big problem.
Sure.
Even though they were supposed to be five acres by, by our twenty thirty-five development plan, they only had improved one acre lots. And so I'm, I'm not sure, because I don't want, I, I don't want to hurt anybody. I just, I think I need to do more research and discuss, discussion with whomever with Josh.
Sure, I appreciate that, because.
And the defer, if it's broken, they defer, they draw out the staff to research. So I think that's, that's about the question, that if there's a conflict between zoning and the comprehensive plan, what should you do? That's, that's about the question that is one that I, I wish I had a better answer to for you all right now, and I can certainly look into that, and next one, I can present a report to the planning commission on that.
Yeah, I, I'm just lost as to what.
Okay, I guess my next question is, defer, do you have a date, the next regular meeting?
I think the next, the next.
Next regular meeting?
It's, it's the staff.
There's been a, I guess, a motion on the side to defer to the next regular planning commission meeting. Say any other questions? All in favor, vote please, say aye.
I vote defer, aye.
Okay. Aye. Motion, the motion carries to defer to the next regular planning commission meeting.
Josh, you have a comment? And again, this is probably more of a legal question, you have a comprehensive plan, and you have zoning code. I would assume that code.
I would assume the code would overrule a plan. Now, I know that we talk about that there's cleanup should again be done, but again, I think there's precedent for a hierarchy, that's a better word, a hierarchy of those documents. A plan is what is used to develop the code and resolutions. So I don't know that it is a standing wall, uh, again, but I'm not looking at this.
And, and so I think what the, the, the issue of the planning commission grabbing at with here is that, you know, hopefully the zoning code, the resolution, and the, uh, comprehensive plan are both adopted, have been adopted by the county commission. As the planning commission is receiving our bigger data from the county commission over the years, is essentially what's happening. Um, we need to work on getting that fixed, so that right now, we've got a law here. And so this is something that's kind of, uh, our county planner, maybe with a, a, a list of law here to go to sort of, or we have this, this kind of same discussion with comprehensive plans. Comprehensive plan is stopped by county commission, has a force law, county commission has only, uh, uh, planning commission has recommendation, right? And so the planning commission is to a extent, uh, required to, to do what the comprehensive plan says. Likewise, though, it's also regarding to do what the zoning code says. And so when, when there's a conflict, like, that, that, that's a good question, and I have no doubt that there's kind of other places I will research, and I'll talk with their law office and, and go ahead with that, and I already asked them to talk about that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, guys. The next item, uh, Royal Park, Bud, Steph, comments, please, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this is a, a, a final plat application for phase two of the Royal Park development. Um, this, this development was originally called the Westwood Development, under a different developer, another developer. I purchased it, Phillips Builders, a number of years ago, and went through media and, and processed to re-engage it. Um, and, 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 and so it's not called Royal Park. Uh, there's thirty lots, those fourteen point six four acres, and the town, the, the savings. Again, Phillips Builders of the property owner, located by a law, by the body, and the sound plan, and the, uh, utilities provided by White House Utility Districts. Um, the project engineer, the manager, civil site, the high group, C S D G, as we all have been. Uh, the rezoning, a little background, this one, uh, the county commission approved the rezoning plan in development on August twenty eighth, twenty seventeen. A final master development plan, and the first flat, this was approved by the planning commission, uh, in December of twenty seventeen. Um, this project is fully vested, it is fully entitled to develop and work for the group master plan. Uh, the first phase has been approved, uh, the plan has been reported, uh, the houses are in process, they're built at this time. Uh, so they're coming in with a second phase at this time, and work for the plan, and I asked for any modifications at this time, it was been approved. Um, the applicant has instructed all infrastructure of the development, and of course, with county regulations, there are roads, uh, curb, gutter, uh, water, sewer, pipelines, other utilities available as well. Uh, the hallways have been inspected throughout the process, as you chairman, the road, road infrastructure, very good infrastructure, have been inspected by county staff, the loss system, sure, they have your parts that have been, and then they add at this time. Uh, so at this time, the applicant's request for final approval, or the tangibility, part of that is to sell lots, then phase two, uh, as they are entitled to. Uh, this is an area photo of such a property, this is a photo, this is from, from seven years ago. Um, the, the first phase actually has, has got the construction, um, down here at this time. Um, this is the current master plan for the development, they're not supposed to alter anything, that they're entitled to do here. Um, this is phase two, roughly, that I've searched for here, on my schedule. Um, the preliminary plat for this item was approved by the planning commission in September of twenty twenty-two. Um, this is another sheet from the, the preliminary plat, they bought in the final plat that, that matches that preliminary plat. So the way I like to describe it, people, is the, the rezoning like this, the, the P D non-asset plan is an idea of what they're going to do, the preliminary plat is exactly what they're going to do, and the, uh, the final plat is what they've done. That's what I like to tell people, and so the final plat is, is, is shows where the road is, how it's going to be, where it is, um, and the lot lines, and, and, you know, all those things, and they've all been pinned, everything else that has to happen about this area. Uh, so this is the final plat, uh, as for all the planning commission, uh, we see, we see the lot layout, it's proposed here and here. Uh, for streets, uh, the applicant has the chief installation of the proposed, uh, future developers, they work in seven days a week. All the other associated infrastructure, uh, center, their current vendors installed, uh, the base tunnel is down, by the road, asphalt is down. So the bottom end arrives on the road, and just put the top road asphalt down, which still will do when the houses are built. Um, the road, the, the road has been constructed in accordance with county standards, they've been inspected by the county engineer during construction. We will require asphalt drums, big turn ends for the road, and for the detention, show on the, on the lap, and after the engineers change that. Um, and a shirge will need to be posted for all the way to the infrastructure, uh, prior to the recording of the final plat. Uh, here in southern county, they break hard line on that, and there are places that will, will post bond the entire road before the road done anything. Uh, southern county will require them to put everything in, and they'll have a bond, the final road asphalt, and post, uh, make a shirge for the drainage and that kind of thing. Uh, all site drainage, can't ever be over stalled, stormwater, detentions will show on the preliminary plat. Um, they were constructed, and they're ready to utilize the set of places at this time, so if that leaves, as the houses are being built, any dirt that might leave the site, will go in those detention places, it's an offsite. Um, again, asphalt will be required for the, uh, for the, the drainage prior to reporting that final plat. Uh, we ensure that it can be posted, that's what. Um, and prior to the final acceptance of the bonds, when everything's all done, it's all grass, it's all cleared, and the houses are built, we will require another set of asphalt drills that will do, that will allow us to release a final shirge on the detention bonds, so we learn the hard way how important that stuff is. Um, utilities and fire protection, uh, water, sewer service are being provided by White House Utilities, uh, water surveillance are installed, fire hydrants are in at this time, I'll show some pictures in a minute. And the fire protection is being provided by the relevant volunteer fire department, uh, which is their Jack's volunteer fire. And, uh, the development actually within their bottom laws, they're required to make a per block contribution to volunteer fire department, I would say a dollar per block per month. Uh, which yourself pay that way with volunteer firefighters. Uh, so some pictures of the road, which is the kind of shade that's there on site, there's houses that are built, there's just city or being built, that's your base one. Uh, phase two awaits this final plat group, we'll start building stuff. Um, you see the, uh, pipe there. See the road, and by your go down, you see that purpose of the, 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 the top road asphalt on the, on the ground. More pictures. So this is the C J, I do like to brag on this, so this is something that it is hard, and, and, uh, we're taking the word for our, about this kind of stuff, but, um, it's a long way from where we used to be, maybe when I started five years ago, um, where the, the whole process was much more chaotic. Now, it's much more organized, it's much more predictable for everybody involved. Um, everything has to be done right before we pull up sell lots, and so, um, that, that incentive, uh, to, to hold the, the ability to sell lots helps, helps us get what we need of it. And so, uh, today, I believe, which is there yesterday, the county engineer, some of the developers represented, tell them how sure that they're going to need to post. Uh, the amount, I believe, is a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred dollars, um. And so, the chairman, there's a couple of questions on strings, approve with conditions, uh, to approve without conditions, uh, to deny it. Um, we'll leave the sites for the specific findings of my compliance and something like this, when this amount of money is being spent, if you want to deny a lot like this. Um, but, uh, the motion to approve, thus, and the conditions of approval there, uh, first, finalizing construction, stabilization, part of the final plat, who's on the rock, check for our sign, the plat picture, there's no additional issues. Um, that provide that one hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred dollar surety, we'll keep in our office, and which we can reduce throughout the process, and then go file a release way later in the process. Um, and they are required, as a condition, to maintain those bonds until six times we've dealt, and they can be released. Um, so in our other six and one before, we have some developers that have managed to get the release without us, playing the clear game, which, on how that happened, but they did. And so, uh, so that doesn't happen anymore. Um, uh, one condition I had on here in the draft, but that I found that what it wasn't they did, was related to a stormwater maintenance inspection, that they already have on recording, that requires them to maintain all this stuff, and allows the, uh, the, the, the detention bonds and that kind of stuff, and allows the county, county inspector on annual basis. And so that's, that's good to know. So sure, that, that was our reservation, I would, I would try to, try to answer your question.
Yeah, of course, for the, that would be your comparison, if not, in a panel motion to approve.
Well, we, well, we don't.
Is there a second?
No second.
Motion made, you brought the second. Item one, I assume it's item one. Okay, item one is what, is what the motion and the second is about. Is there any other discussion, being on, go ahead.
This, Mr. Senator, the, um, Chapel Island Fire Department has committed to protecting, or do we have, do we have any letters, uh, regarding their acceptance of coverage?
Uh, well, not really, no, I mean, it's, it's kind of a voluntary and informal thing, and that was discussed at the, at the county commission's budget meeting last night. The waiting off into the, that kind of service provision agreements and that kind of thing, is the county tied up in this thing. But one thing that didn't happen, it was before my time, but it's in the finals. Um, New Chapel Island Volunteer Fire Department was actually very heavily involved during the course of this approval, they were kind of worked in as the stakeholder. And that was one of the reasons that the, the county commission, or the planning commission, as I remember it was, required them, when they put their C C Rs, their cover those conditions and instructions together, um, to, they required them to, to make a payment to the volunteer fire department. And for other developing these, that comes, they're sensitive, we emulated that, we do require them as a, as an H O A requirement, that they have to make dedication to the volunteer fire department every year.
Yeah, I, I was just concerned, because as you're well aware, there's semi knockdowns going with the fire coverage, and. I, 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 I mean, the county EMS is one, the volunteer fire departments are another, I just, I want to make sure that people don't get in trouble as they buy these houses, because they don't have the fire cover, so it's, it's just a question. So we do not expect or give any confirmation from the volunteer?
They're, they're volunteers, and, and so, so they're, they're service area, and I'm, I'm certain that they will do their best to respond to something that happens, um, but it is outside of county, you're right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All the people said motion vote, stand aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Uh, director Sunday, he said, just be there.
The, the, the one before that, Mr. Trump.
Was it, uh, very confirmed, that's just right, the minor class to be approved, I put them all in the packet, the whole string, you sort of like, oh, I love to. Uh, we got on Saturday, and, and it was the month. Uh, it's sort of the directors, I think, uh, making, making official, I did want to say, uh, we have a camera a little bit, my wife's grandmother, basically, saw people going down to Mississippi on Friday. Uh, I'll be back soon, I'll next week, I'll just, I'll let everybody know that.
Thank you, in a panel motion to, as chairman.
Come in.
Second, most, maybe you brought the second, I would say aye.
Aye.
That's, that's, most carries, it's the only unit. Both that we've had. I'm sorry.
Josh, mutual agreements with Bill.
Well, I'm, I'm a volunteer, volunteer fire department, I, I'm a servant, and I know so well.
We do.
The arm that came, and all that stuff.
We also, Bill's also done a, a, a.
Thank you, thank you.
But if, you know, if it's not a straight, if it's not a state road, which is like. If it's not a state road, then the state could, about that. Well, again, well, let's say.